Evening, I'd like to call out session to order. Roll call please.
This is Angela, roll call Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Broneman.
Here.
Haley. Mylan.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda of the work session.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
This is Angela, roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Broneman.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, we'll take up our board and GM updates. I'd start here for just a second. When we were doing our strategic plan, I said I would like for us as a board to do a self evaluation. So I actually the one time in the material that you gave us and after surveying some and having Steve send a few. So I'm going to pass these out tonight and ask that you would get them filled out sometime before the end of my term, which is December and probably return them to Angela. There's not a space for your name, but please put your name on them because they'll be open record. So that's what I would like you to do. And then, once we get everybody's, I'm hoping for a time that we can discuss. There's a comment section here and I'm hoping there's a place that we can discuss, you know, some positive improvements or ways to move forward. Angela, coffee for you and Bill.
Thank you.
There one for Bob?
There's no one for.
Here. Okay, and. Oh, okay. So Haley has joined us remotely. And I'm going to try to.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's it. I think that's all I have.
I just had a question about the email that sent out by Dennis earlier about the parking garage. Are we having problems? Have we had problems in the parking garage? Or what? We did have a recent break in in one of our employees vehicles. And we know during cold weather, we tend to have more problems. In addition to that, the entrance, the Minnesota Avenue entrance to the garage will be shut down in the next week or two. So that we have to leave the gates up on State Avenue. So we're a little concerned about that. And so we wanted to send out a message to them.
So we've just had the one incident?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything they want to bring forward? Okay.
Update from last week. Water, Steve, Steve, Chris, Philip, Lori and I all went over to UG to go before, and Angie, go for the standing committee. We took our revolving loan increase request over to them and they got approved by the by the standing committee. So now we're going back next month, I think, Lori, for commit for commission meeting for application over there. But not as many questions as I would have expected, but there was some, you know, just wanting to ask about the changes and funding and why, and then what does this go to improve? And as the end of projects already started and things like that. So Lori, anything you or Steve want to add?
Did we have a deadline on that?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as we're moving across this.
This is Jeff. Would you send us an update and let us know what date?
Yes.
There's a bit of thing you have to make it.
Yes.
Show some support.
Yeah, I'll try to show up too.
Good.
November 3rd.
November 3rd. Okay, well, I'll send an email out.
Okay.
That's all I have for at least for the work session. I'll wait on the regular session for more of the comments.
Madam President, Mr. Haley raises.
Yes, Mr. Haley.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Camp. I just wanted to add, I'm on the on economic development on that committee. And the presentation that was brought by our GM and by our the staff was exceptional. He said there weren't many questions was because they covered it very thoroughly. It was most appreciated by those that were there in attendance. And just wanted to add how expertly they brought the loan amendment before, which will be before the U the full UG. They did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. All right, ready to move?
Next item, still continuing on with our 2023 budget plan. So first topic up is our 2023 proposed staffing. Dennis and Ashley, tell me, I'm on the presentation for this.
Good evening, board. I'm Dennis Duma, the HR Director. We're going to talk this this evening about our staffing presentation and with regard to our budget. You see, we have a number of bullet points up there. I'm not going to go through every every one of them. But we are going to talk about headcount and staffing. We're going to review a little bit, have a historical review of our overtime, talk a little bit about we have not the individuals, but how many people we have coming up or eligible for retirement, some employment trends, and then age and length of service. This is the proposed staffing in the 2023 budget. What you will see is that we are recommending eliminated eliminating three positions. Those are not filled positions, but going from a recommended number of 563 positions in the budget to 560. There were some functions where we had some transfer of positions. So you'll notice under electric supply, we are transferring four positions up into finance. And those are the differences that you see there. The only other differences that we have would be under electric operations. We would have one position eliminated there. Under electric production, the Nierman Power Plant, we'd have five positions eliminated there. General management, we added one position, and that is the COO position. Technology, we're adding three positions, which are high level professional positions. Some of those being related to cybersecurity. And then water operations would be losing one position as well. So you'll see in the last two years, we've eliminated 30 positions from the budget and not laying anybody off. Okay, so as far as approved positions, you'll see the full time employees that we have built today are 491 and approved positions in 22, 563. From 2015 to to the 2022 budget, we've eliminated 100 positions at BPU and a total of 66 people in that timeframe as well. Next, we show vacancies and our personnel requisition. So basically, the number of positions you'll see in the the middle column that are that are vacant and then the active number of personnel requisitions that we have where we're seeking candidates, a total of 17 of those roles. And you know, typically, what what we have is that there are a number of reasons that somebody might not fill a position at this time. It could vary anywhere from space issues to, you know, pulling a position down because of lack of recruits or something of that. Staffing by locations, you know, not a real important slide, but it gives you a good idea of where most of our people are located. So you'll see the number one facility with regard to number of positions is the service center. So out at the Jared and Jeremy's group where we have the most number of people. Largest is our administration building. And then third is in the power plant. So you can see the allotment of folks that we have around the city. Next is just a historical review of our overtime. And you'll see the BPU's done, you know, pretty, pretty darn well in the last number of years when it comes to the amount of overtime versus 2016, 2017 in that in those areas. So we've been able to reduce overtime. We're on a trend this year, projected is about 3.895 million. You'll see the 3.1 million number that's year to date. And just projecting that out, we're probably in the 3.8 million area. Yeah, Rose.
Dennis?
Yes.
On on that particular, does the electric operations, does that count contractors? Does that count capital?
It does not. Those are employee hours. Jeremy?
If that's how you count that, that sometimes they will work out for restoration activities. I don't know if that's called in there or not.
Yes.
Yes, just employees.
Well, what I'm going to ask is everything that's on this PowerPoint, all employees only, not contract employees?
It's consistent, yes.
Thanks.
Retirement data, we got projected in 2022, 22% of our organization is eligible for retirement. One of the reasons that we started our program, succession planning program, was because those numbers are always concerning, you know, that you have, you know, potentially a lot of long tenured people eligible to leave. So again, you know, I think we feel pretty good about the succession planning program. We're getting ready to roll that down a level so that it's not just our top level people that we're identifying. We're also going to identify all of our director level potential candidates as well from an internal perspective.
Dennis, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Just I'd like the record to show that Mr. Haley is here in person. Thank you.
And then the the percentage retired, you can see that number jumped up to 4.43% this year. And we think 21, 22, those numbers, you're looking at those because we do have, you know, a significant amount of changes going on at BPU with regard to our headcount. And and then addition, COVID didn't help us at all. So those are some trends with retirement data or employment trends. Again, you know, our turnover rate at BPU is really strong. And when you see total turnover at 7%, and that's including your retirements, your termination turnover in the, you know, four to 5% range. And this year, we're trending at 2.62%. Those are really strong numbers that once we can get people in the door, they have a tendency to stay at BPU, which is really an important thing. And it's extremely important in today's employment market. It is a tough employment market and it's getting harder and harder to fill not only our technical roles, but our standard, you know, roles, entry level roles. It's just the economy is is really difficult when it comes to hiring employees anywhere in the United States today, let alone your BP. Age and length of service statistics. We're getting older and that's not a bad thing either. So, you know, our average age of our employee is hovers between 48 and 49. And the length, average length of services between 13 and 14. I think the higher percentage of retirement eligible gets, you know, the more that we'll see people leaving and our those numbers may be trending down a little bit eventually. Right now, they're trending up and, you know, for me, those are, I think those are good things. Average age of a full time BP employee is 58. The average age at retirement is 59. That's gone up. People are staying and staying longer, you know, for many different reasons. The average years of service is 13 years and retirement turnover is in 2021 was projected was at 2.96%. And that is our presentation. Any questions?
Do we have a copy of that?
I've got one right. Well, yeah, I can.
Can you send us all copy, please?
Sure.
And then, so where do we capture contract information? And I'm really looking at contract employees because I know IT has a bunch of them.
Yes, we've got some some numbers that aren't in the slide. We've got a total of what, 23?
Yeah, 23 is where we're.
So let us define that, Rose, because when we talk about contract positions, we talk about positions that could potentially be filled in a permanent role.
Right.
As a regular employee.
Right.
Out of those 23, I think 18 are in IT. And we are finding it's the IT market. It's very difficult.
Sure.
It's difficult for any employer and we really struggle for all those roles. And most of these roles that we have contractors in all those 23 are relatively technical roles.
They're specialized.
And that this does not include our capital electric.
Understood.
Contractors.
Right.
Yes.
So let's stay on the subject of contractors. So do we break down how much we spend through contractors by department? Kind of like what you had in your PowerPoint when you showed all the different departments. Do we know how much we're spending annually in each of those departments for contracting?
I would defer it either.
Not specifically, you know, there are, we have service agreements or like in capital, whatever, so that all of their maintenance agreements they have. We don't have this class that determines all the contractors itself.
Do we know how much we spend on contractors annually? Total?
Of the ones that.
All the contractors that we use.
Whether it's service or.
Non-employees, yes.
I don't have an overall number right now. I mean.
No, I know, but can we pull those numbers? I I have asked many times in the past to know how much we spend on contractors annually. I'd like to see the amount that we spent the last, you know, 2021, 2020, and then year to date for 2022, how much we've spent on contractors, non-employees. So even if they're the IT contractors, I just want to, I just want to understand. We know how much we spent on our labor.
Of the 23 that he was speaking of.
I want to know how much non-employee wages we're spending. So how much, how much are we paying for contractors in IT if they're not, if they're not full time employees? And if they're not on the list of how much we we vote to approve on our budget for labor? I want to know how many dollars that is because I know that there's dollars out there for other things. I I want to understand how much are we going up, we going down? I just want to understand. I mean, I know, I understand the reason why we use contractors. So it's nothing, nothing against the idea that we use contractors, we, everybody does. But I just want to understand the the volume of dollars we're spending on contractors.
And that's why I was trying to, you know, like we bring Black and Beach in, help with project engineering or whatever. So those are dollars you want to.
I know, yes. I I just want to see how we're trending. I know that there's going to be blips in the radar for like when we did the AQAS system. You know, we had unexpected number of dollars for Black and Beach or Burns and Mack, whoever was doing all the the engineering for it, but still, I I just want to see.
But you want capital as well as all of them?
Lori, why don't we do that? Why don't we, but all the contractors in the three different categories we talked about? So there are contractors, there are service agreements, and then there's part time employees.
Or well, part time employees, we need to, we do have part time employees with the.
Okay.
And we just need to be careful that we don't ever call a contractor an employee.
I know, but I'm.
I know, you're not.
Yeah, just define the group.
Define it outside of a normal.
Normal 40 hours.
Okay, so.
So is Black and Beach not considered consulting? It's.
I mean, they're consulting. So that they do help us on, we have capital projects.
The design and.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we want capital.
Yes, please.
So you want everything, Jeff?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we got to, that's going to take some time to go back.
I understand that.
Every service agreement we sign, not, so when we do a service agreement, we're not contracting for a specific headcount. It's just through the cost of that service.
It's fine. I don't, I don't need to know the number of people.
Okay.
I'm not interested in the number of people. I just want to know the the dollars spent on contracting for the last couple, you know, just to start seeing a trend on it so that we can start looking at that and just seeing. I mean, there may be, especially with what's going on in the work market these days, the difficulty finding finding employees, we may see that that trend line goes up. I just want to be able to understand the trend line as it's happening so that we know that maybe we're at a point that, I don't know, that we have to really think about some of the things we talked about as far as separating groups and understanding the the value of different groups. So we need to know, I need to know where we're, we've been and where we're at, or I know where what we're looking forward.
Yeah, one example, we just went through and went through an outage, right? So we brought in service, I would say service contractors. They came in, worked for a few weeks and then they left. That was under a service agreement. And we can give you the cost of that, but it'll be the cost of the service, not necessarily a cost, an identification on how many people were actually there.
That's fine. I don't care how many people. I I.
You're concerned with the dollar amount?
I'm just looking at the dollar. I just want to know where our spends, how much we're spending on our our labor versus how much we're spending on not our labor.
Well, and Bill, in that example of the outage. I'm under that service agreement. Is that still on a like an hourly basis? There's not a fixed cost associated with the maintenance? Or is there?
Not always, no.
Well, like if they're coming in to do the project, they would do a fixed cost or.
On a per project basis?
Or something like that.
It may not.
May not be tied to saying hourly rates.
Right, that's where I was going.
And I didn't care. Again, I don't care what the number is, but I'm just.
Yes.
I got you. Okay.
It'd be a fixed fixed price for that work, but it may not identify the personnel.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that would be, take forever to try to identify number.
Right, yeah.
My my question is minimal, I guess, next to where we are. I'm still curious about the net decrease in those five that are on the line that we had in the in the lobby. I think there were five or we heard somewhere four on the teller line. I may have the numbers back, but are your numbers reflective of a permanent decrease or reassignment? How many of those are reassigned? And, you know, after we get the numbers back on the contract employees, I'd be curious to know how that stacks up in terms of what the the dollar figures.
Yes, that those would be reflected reflected in the 2021 number. So when we eliminated 27 positions, four of those were were caught up from customer service.
And then weren't there five?
Or there might have been five, you know, whatever that number was. But yes, they're reflective already in in those numbers.
And then, so customer service is both the teller line, not the teller line, but the customer service line back behind the glass, if you will, and the and phones, but then they're actually the person face to face.
Yes.
So that's absorbed in that five. I I misunderstood it, either five and four, or four and five, a total of nine.
Now, now, there were a total of, I think, five positions eliminated in that, right, in 2021 or 20?
So in 21, we started, 21, we have 49. And then in 22, we went down to 44 in customer service.
So five.
So there's five positions.
Okay.
But the security, I would, there was vision, sounds like by not having the lobby open, that there was a security cost. Are those numbers for security reflected? They're not full time employees?
Right, they're part time and then consumers, contractors as well. So we've reduced the budget for Garter World significantly. And that's part of that would be the lobby security as well as our part time Kansas, Kansas police officers. That number is going down as well.
Is there a simple line item between the numbers you just gave and what what expense was absorbed? And but it's, I guess, reflected in savings as between the previous year and.
From from the security perspective, yes.
Security and the line and the and the teller line.
Yeah, and the teller.
Customer service line, I'm sorry.
Those numbers we had last week, and so we can show you what those were from a full time headcount perspective, and then the security dollar reduction we had has had that as well.
The savings.
So we can show you what the savings is.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I have a follow up question on that, Dennis. On the five positions that were eliminated, I I feel like we had a disconnect last week on the board's understanding. Those positions were eliminated. Were the people eliminated?
No.
Okay, I think that's what we thought at the time.
Yeah, no, we we do everything we can not to have to lay off persons. There's vacant roles and people were transferred into other vacant roles that we have here.
So to continue on that line, so I noticed that there were three active, open, you know, seeking three positions to be filled in customer service. Are all of those in the area where they will be dealing directly with the customers, you know?
You mean on the phone or through some type of communication?
I'm taking it we only do it through the phone now because we don't have an open lobby.
You have email communication, so they transition to doing things online. So they would be in both areas.
Okay. I I still have a concern that that I have seen a large increase in calls from customers about lengthy wait times and just the feel of general feel of unresponsiveness. It's happened since COVID began, since we closed the front lobby, so.
Definitely, we are working with Donna as team. Either our recruiter, our along with Donna, Donna, the supervisors. And in the past, what do you say, too much Donna, they've had about five people, five to six people start. So we're kind of catching up from that coverage turnover and we, you know, been asked. So there's two people starting in collections, there's been three people in telephone. So it takes a while to get them trained. So hopefully, in the near future, you'll see those those calls and times and hopefully the complaints reduce because we'll have more people on the phone.
Yeah, and I understand that, you know, that particular spot, that position is not sought out after. I have, I deal with a lot of people who do deal with customer service. So I I know that it's not a, you know, highly, you know, it's an entry position and the people want to move out. But I think it's a very important position that we try to keep it as full and robust as possible because especially these days, it is the only avenue that our customers have really to get to us, so.
So daddy, that's one of the positions in the utility that has the highest turnover rate. The people will come in. Not everybody's made out in a way that they can deal with customer service. But it is a three level position. Other are the clerical positions open up around utility. They'll start bidding out to those those areas. But, you know, hopefully, I'll I'll say this, you know, during COVID, we had to put a freeze on a lot of things. So I mean, there was certainly capital projects that were frozen. There was a whole lot of operational expenses that was frozen too. And one thing was just slowing down our hiring rate because we didn't know where this pandemic was going to go. You know, we made a severe cut in overtime, you know, only once the emergency type thing. There was a lot of, lot of things that we put in place at that point. Now that we're coming out, I mean, I am releasing job requests when they come through my office. We're posting, so I'm not slowing them down like we did before. And but it's still, we're still in the catch up mode, trying to get back to where where we would like to get to. The other thing I've asked staff to do is start thinking about not just 2023, but where do we need to get to in 2025? And start thinking about any type of other changes we need to make down the road because utility is going to change just like everything else. And staffing two years, three years down the road, we may have to think about something different in terms of what we're doing compared to what we're doing today. So keep that image in mind, or where do we need to get to and start, you know, trying to plan for that type of future.
And, you know, I know currently there is no plans to reopen the lobby. And I know that I know that the times are changing. It's a little harder harder for dinosaurs, but I think that if if the future of the utility is that we're not going to have a lobby presence, we're just going to work everybody through a digital or, you know. a digital or, you know, an audio, uh, avenues to deal with them. And the people that are handling those roles are really the, for a lot of our customers, probably the only people they will ever talk to, the only representative from the BPU that they will ever engage with. Uh, maybe it's a, it's a bigger conversation downstream that we reassess what we are paying our customer service people as far as, I know that there are industry standards, but maybe in our, in our area, we need to, we need to rethink this a little bit and sit down and, and really hash out is, is, is that really what we want to be an entry level position? Or is that something we want to be a little more of an experienced position and kind of force it to a point that people have to bid into it instead of it out of it? So I know it's not something we have to handle.
I'll just, I'll just give a quick answer to that. I think what we showed the other day, that job is going to become more and more technical too, okay? Because technology we're rolling out and asking employees to do, may require some other look at where are we hiring and what are they, what are they capable to do in this new information age? Okay? And, uh, I would think that would garner some, some type of pay consideration.
What, what's the starting salary for a customer service rep today? Does anybody know?
It's, I, I think twenty, between twenty-four, twenty-five dollars an hour. Just a bad.
Two thousand. Two thousand eighty hours.
Cause I think our lowest paid person is at forty, forty-eight thousand a year, so.
I'm hearing nineteen and twenty over here, or twenty-four, twenty-five over here.
I, it's, I think our lowest paid BPU employee.
Nineteen dollars. It's, it's nineteen dollars.
So they, but they move up extremely quickly because our lowest paid person was twenty-four bucks an hour, I want to say, uh, last year. So, you know, they're moving up every six months.
Every year.
Forty-five million years.
Well, they're getting a step and, uh, a year service. So.
All those clerical jobs have step progressions. They go up from level one, level two, level three. They got specialist positions that go above that, so. Like every six months or so, they get increases.
It's, yeah, I think it's a year, but then, then it's two, it's step and.
Right.
How long do they have to stay in that role before they can bid out?
It's a year.
Six months.
There's six months, six months.
Six months, past expiration.
And most people don't bid that fast out of, um, customer service. And the good thing is we're not losing the talent, but some of these people do bid down to clerk ones, but the, that's because they can't handle the, it's just the phones are just not for them. Um, so we, you know, John has changed some of how they, who they're hiring, uh, bringing them a little bit different as learning person is getting a little better.
But, but we don't, we find even those roles, and John Ed will attest to this, they're tough to fill. They're, I mean, they're, they're, it's a different people, uh, it, as Bill said, it's a technological position. It's getting more technology and with that comes flexibility. Um, and they're used to that. And for the first time ever, we had three candidates in a row turn us down.
Cause they don't have work from home positions, or were offered work from home positions. That was there.
Yep. It's all over, it's all over.
Paying them higher, they just start at work from home.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Is the utility going to entertain a work from home policy?
I'm not going to bring one to the board.
I don't know that that answered my question, but okay.
Did I ask if the board was going to entertain one? Ask the utility was going to entertain one?
Always, always, always.
X on the agenda. If there's no other questions, any other questions?
Not for me, Bill.
Uh, twenty twenty-three revenue forecast, uh.
Good evening. Tonight, kind of our annual review of, uh, the revenue forecast that we come up with to is our starting point for our twenty twenty budget. So this is kind of just a, a simple review. We'll go over the, the customer classes, uh, look at some trending that's, that's going on in some of those revenue classes, uh, the last couple of years. Um, more customer growth from new customers, uh, that have occurred. I'll show you some graphs for each, each customer class. And by all means, make this interactive. So if you have questions, go. From there. So, you know, the first, we always say, I work with Andrew in the planning department, we kind of do this together to look at some of the growth that he's seeing on the load side and, and specifically purchase power costs that, that, that we are seeing, the one yard ERC. We look at our new customers, that, the number of new customers that have come into the service territory the past year. We kind of look at the monthly consumption trends that each customer class has. Uh, we also look at the top customers that we have in the utility and evaluate whether there's any movement within that top ten or top twenty. Uh, we, like I mentioned, we, we go over the purchase power cost, uh, for twenty-three because that's a huge impact on the bill. Uh, that goes, rolls into the ERC for the, uh, uh, next year. Uh, we also evaluate the environmental surcharge and the debt service that goes into that calculation. You know, overall, from a high level view, you know, when we look at our top ten customers, um, when we compare this year to last year, you know, they're up about fifteen percent, which is a good, good sign. However, you know, the, the downside of that is if you go back and look at the past five or six years, they're, they're still lower than what we saw in twenty eighteen. So they're coming out of it a little bit from the pandemic, but we're still not back to those levels that we were seeing, uh, in, in twenty eighteen, so, so forth. Um, we're seeing a declining trend in our commercial area. It's kind of middle level. Uh, rate two fifty, those are demands in that seventy to, um, seventy to two hundred range. It's just been a slow creep down over the years. A positive trend, our residential's, uh, consumption has been growing a little bit. We're adding about a half a percent in our customer count in our class. In past four years, we've averaged a point five five percent increase on average. Residential consumption's gone up about two percent from last year. That's probably more weather related than anything. But, you know, it's, it's, it's just, it's just this. So the, the three major components that go into the, the electric rate is the, the base rate and, you know, we're making assumptions on the base rate. There's no changes to the base rates. We're going to go off what's in the manual currently. The ERC, I just had a couple quotes that I, I copied from the latest, uh, EIA report, short-term outlook that I just received last week. And basically that second one there kind of sums up what we're seeing in the ERC. And I think Andrew kind of reiterated some of this probably in his, his presentation last time. Um, on average, you know, the wholesale commodities for natural gas prices are, are expected to be much higher this winter compared to last winter. Um, which is going to lead to a lot higher prices, um, that go into the, uh, the, for those natural gas plants that are primarily burning natural gas, uh, natural gas, the source of energy. So they're projecting last year's test, we're using three and a half cents for the ERC. And we're bumping that up to four cents on average for twenty-three. The e- environmental surcharge is, is, uh, is going to be flat relatively next year. It's really tied to debt services. It's, it's going up about a hundred fifty-three thousand dollars in twenty-three. Uh, when you look at overall loads, you know, we're seeing a slight reduction of about twenty-two, five percent in the four major classes of residential, commercial, industrial and schools. So the components on the bill, this is, this, this is kind of a question for everyone. There's, uh, four major classes that we'll talk about. Base rates, for, for example, residential makes up sixty-four percent of the base rates in the bill. Twenty-nine percent is related to the ERC and seven percent is related to the environmental surcharge. So that's just a little representation of who is impacted the most with the ERC. It's, you know, it's our larger customers. We'll have, uh, see the largest impact of that, those higher natural gas prices, um, next year. So this graph and slide is really focusing on our residential customers. And like I mentioned earlier, we're seeing some, some growth there. Uh, on average, we're seeing about three hundred twenty-five customers a year. Average usage for the year, the annual average is, is remaining about at a hundred eleven last year. When I calculated, it ranged between eight twenty, eight, eight hundred. So, um, eight eleven's pretty stable. The, uh, like I mentioned earlier, the, the twenty-two consumption's a little bit higher than twenty-one's for the first nine months and it's probably weather related. This is kind of a representation of the twelve-month, uh, billing units over the residential class since back to twenty fourteen. The red line kind of indicates where our forecast is going to be, what we're going to use as our basis for twenty-third, twenty, twenty-three's number. The blue line is where the average is. So we're a little bit above the average of the nine-year, nine-year average on this, this class. Uh, but, um, which, you know, it's kind of related to those added customers that we're seeing coming into the service territory. And, uh, you know, it, it can be a little, little bit weather-related, um, impact on this class, but, um, that's a positive, positive sign. For commercial, you know, there's really three major areas that go into the commercial area. There's a small and a medium and a large service class. The smaller commercial class is really stable. Uh, we don't really see a whole lot of movement there. Those customers are uh, um, very predictable. It's this medium general service class that we're seeing some, some decreases. Um, we had four hundred eighty-eight on average customers in, in twenty twenty-two and the fiber average is about five hundred and eighty. So we are seeing some softness in that, that, that middle, middle tier customer. And the large and the, the large service classes, should say just large, huge service class. Overall, if you trended this out, this class, this commercial class is probably more decreasing than anything. So, you know, we're going to use nine hundred, or nine hundred and eighteen thousand megawatts for our, our, uh, forecast for twenty-three. Similar to the, the previous slide, this looks at the, uh, commercial class, uh, a little bit below the average. The red line, uh, the line's the average for the nine years. Forecast is, is coming in below that, which is kind of what I would expect based on the factors indicated above. So our national load is, the number of customers is, is remaining stable. It's just, you know, we're trending, overall trending down. You can kind of see that dip out of twenty-one, twenty-two. We're kind of coming out of that pandemic impact for some of those customers. So there's a bit of a recovery in twenty-two. The twenty-two's a little bit higher, we're eleven percent higher than twenty-one for the nine months. But we're still below the twenty, fourteen and fifteen months. Our, our estimate, this one, I'm still looking at this class. It's possible. I'm still kind of wanting to get some information on this fourth quarter. So this could change a little bit. Um, so I'm still up in the air about some of the numbers that I'm seeing. My stance now, we're five hundred twenty-nine thousand megawatts.
If, if you had to guess if it does change up or down?
Down.
Down.
Yeah.
Uh, this, the fourth major category, schools. Probably, it's the smallest of all, or, uh, relative stable. It's really driven by the climate temperatures, a lot of those facilities are heating up. So if it's a cold, cold winter, we'll probably see higher numbers in this category. Uh, there has been some added facilities in this, this group, so, and some additional square footage has been added over the last two, four years. So our estimate for twenty-three is very similar. This is our nine-year average or above the nine-year average on estimates. Addressing the environmental surcharge, I still think a hundred fifty thousand dollar increase that service for, for those primary or basic projects. Um, for twenty-three, we're at sixteen point eight million dollars. It has to be recovered. Surcharge should have a, a very small, small impact on the overall rate that goes into that. Really will depend on if we have an over or under recovery for twenty-two. We usually do that calculation sometime early November, early to mid-November. So overall, the forecast for on the electric side, we're seeing a two hundred forty-eight point six. Higher than two hundred thirty-five from, from last year. Uh, ninety-eight percent of that is related to the, um, ERC. So it's all pass-through money. That's, that's, that's flowing through there. Small increase in our surcharge, uh, and there's a slight decrease in the overall usage of, of, you know, quarter. And for water, there's, I, I should note also, both of these are based on no rate increases and no rate adjustments. Uh, so it's just based on whatever's in the, the current rate manual today. Same with this, this slight increase of about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, water's very stable. It's pretty predictable to budget.
We still have a capital improvement plan and that's it, right? I'll be coming up. Second meeting in November, okay? Then we'll, uh, after that, we're going for a budget retreat with the board and we'll start over and talk a little bit about what you heard here and.
Did we set a date for the board retreat? December fifth?
What's the date again?
December fifth.
December the fifth.
On Monday, right? We're going to try to get that done in one day.
Uh, if you guys want to, I think we, we would all like to get it done in one day.
I think it would start at eight AM.
Yes.
We did last year.
The last couple of years, we've been able to get it done in one. Works out.
So, so we'll have it, if there's no objection, we'll have it on the field. We have a board meeting on the seventh. We'll come back to the board on the twenty-first and ask for, ask for approval. If that's okay.
It's about what we normally do.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, like normal procedure, usually the last.
So before we get there, if there's, think back on what we presented. You want to see something a little bit different? If you You want to see something a little bit different? If you want to ask questions, you know, send us your request, and we'll try to put it together in the presentation for those for the budget retreat. Try to get answers, uh that helps with getting through things a lot quicker too. So sometimes things may come up, you may ask us something, we have to go out. Somebody's gotta go out, pull the research together and then bring it back, so as much as you can, if you can just let us know what your questions are, what your requests are.
All right, all of us who've been through it before, I think we usually know what what you have questions with and can do that beforehand. Is that a little bit of a disadvantage not having gone through the budget process, but?
He's got a good mentor.
Yeah. Can always ask, you know, for additional information either beforehand or today. Is is there anything else?
Uh I think that's all that we have.
All right, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Move to adjourn. I'll second it.
Roll call.
Angela, roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Broneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Malvanyi Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries. The work session is adjourned.